I'll call to order the Monday, August 14th meeting of the Verona Common Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Next, we'll have the roll call. Clerk Clark. Alder Person Diaz.
Here.
Alder Person Doyle.
Here.
Alder Person Gaskell. Alder Person Linder.
Here.
Alder Person McGilvery.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Steiner.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
Alder Person Gaskell is absent and excused. Thank you. On to Agenda Item Number Four, Public Comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Approval of Minutes from the July 24th, 2017 Common Council Meeting. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder McGilvery. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those are approved. Since the mayor is absent, we don't have any mayor's business tonight. Onto the Administrator's Report. Mr. McCorskey.
Thank you. Got a couple items. First off, Wednesday, August 16th at 7:00 PM at City Hall, it'll be in the Council Conference Room. It's D-110, it's the large conference room. We'll have a Ice Age Trail Alliance public meeting. They're going to be talking about backpacking on the Ice Age Trail and a project that they're putting together to do backpack, a four-day backpacking trip through the Cheggamy National Forest, which is a part of the Ice Age Trail in Wisconsin. It's September 18th through 21st, and they're looking for 20 registrants to participate in that project. But, the big thing is, they wanted to be a, Verona is an Ice Age Trail community, they wanted to develop a project that got some people involved, got the community involved with the Ice Age Trail. And this is the first project that they came up with, which is the four-day backpacking trip. This presentation will also provide more additional information regarding the Ice Age Trail itself and the trail through Verona. Second item is tomorrow, August 15th, is City Hall Selfie Day. And it's kind of an interesting thing to do. It's a national event sponsored by ELGL, which is Educating Local Government Leaders. I sent out a couple tweets today regarding it, but it's a way to show civic pride. Come down to City Hall, I have a selfie with City Hall in the background, send it to hashtag #CityHallSelfie, and it becomes a part of the national, a national project. And this company is actually providing prizes for more interesting pictures, or just pictures from different size communities, a whole bunch of different prizes. So I thought I'd provide everybody that information.
What time is that?
I'm sorry?
What time?
It's tomorrow, all day tomorrow.
Starting at?
I would say midnight. It's August 15th. Is...
Starting at midnight?
Well, anytime that the date check is...
There's somebody there to take your picture?
Right. You take yourself a selfie and then you send it. Right.
Oh, I can't do that.
Third project is on County M. You may have noticed that there's some construction, utility construction going on. That is the first phase of construction relocation, utility relocation for the big MPD intersection project. Probably starting now until the end of the project, there will be some work being done on County M and that intersection. You also may notice that it's flagged out there for the right-of-ways, and you'll see how big of a project that's going to be. So I just thought I'd let you know that that is a part of the, the construction is a part of it, it's utility relocation, and we'll be moving forward with that project from now on. The city's part of it. City water sewer utilities will be a little bit later, but the private utilities have to do some relocation before we can start. And that's all I have.
Thank you for the update. Next, we have the Engineer's Report. Mr. Montpass.
Thank you, Alder Doyle. A few updates. Everybody is, I'm sure, thrilled now that South Main Street is open, so that'll probably be my last update on the downtown streetscape stage two. They're doing cleanup and restoration. The 2017 street rehab has started. Raymond P. Cattell is doing that work on North Jefferson and Gilman. The construction on PD from Shady Oak to Woods Road is complete, and all the lanes are open, the traffic lights and signals are on. As Mr. McCorskey indicated, the County Trunk M and PD project has been awarded, that was awarded on Friday. Part of that project, as Mr. McCorskey said, is the utility relocates. The contractor, I believe, will be starting on PD sometime in late September, October, and then it'll be staged through 2019 for final completion on that project. All of the signals that have been ongoing, Old PB and Wayland, South Main and Paoli, and West Verona and West End Circle are complete and operational. Timing has been checked on those, and to this point, is satisfactory for the traffic we're seeing. And the contractor is going through some middle of closeout documents, probably for September. Lincoln Street Channel, right outside of City Hall, has, work on that has started. The banks have been mowed and the trees have been removed. We'll be, AECOM will be doing construction staking tomorrow or Wednesday for the contractor starts channel work. And the city parking lots will be bid on August 22nd at 10 o'clock in the morning with an anticipated recommendation of award to Common Council on August 28th.
Thank you, Mr. Montpass. Any questions or comments? Alder Steiner.
Thank you, Alder Doyle. Is the work going to be done on Loader Lane Two for that project over by Jefferson? Do you know?
I don't know the extent of the project right off the top of my head, Mr. Steiner. I can look that up and get back to you on that.
Well, they were, it looks like, there's stakes there, so I told the people that I thought, but I told them I would ask you tonight.
I don't have the plans directly in front of me. I know they're started on Jefferson and Gilman. There might be some stuff on Loader as well.
And the other question I had from people down there by Prairie Heights and Lucas, there's a sidewalk potential project going to happen there along Carnes Corners?
Yes.
And they're waiting on a culvert? Is that what it is underneath the, because the culvert there would not hold a sidewalk? Is that correct?
It's not long enough along the channel bed in order to handle that, so yes, we have to permit that through the DNR, and because it's a cold water stream, there's only a certain time period you can actually work on it, which is, I believe, the middle of the summer. So, we've missed this year, so we're working on the plans right now. The city staff has 60 percent plans, and we'll work on permitting this fall and winter and get ready to go for that box culvert extension in late spring, summer next year.
Now, does Dean County have any responsibility on that?
As far as I know, no, they do not. It's strictly the city's.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, next on the agenda, we have Agenda Item Nine, Committee Reports. We'll go to the Finance Committee with Alder McGilvery.
Thank you, Madam President. Under Item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in amount of
We have a motion by Alder McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder.
In the way of explanation, we have three large items, first being to AECOM Technical Services for engineering services provided for multiple projects throughout the city, that amount being $141,104.49. The second one being to Enterprise Lighting, LTD, Street Lights, which is $236,342.46. And finally, to Parisi Construction for Streetscape Stage Two and Three Construction, $320,869.24.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments for the Finance Committee? Okay, the motion before you is payment of the bills. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And that motion passes. Any further business from the Finance Committee?
As you all know, we're working through the budget process, so feel free to come join us. It's exciting work. We meet a couple times a week. It's coming up here, it seems like, so feel free to check with Mr. McCorskey and see what the schedule is, if you have any specific interests in the budget, he can provide you with that information when we'll be taking on specific items on the budget.
Thank you, Alder McGilvery. And I know the start of operating budget proposals is this Thursday at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. Next, we have Agenda Item 9B, Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Touche.
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to skip to Item Three, as Items One and Two were postponed at the committee level. So Item Three, I am making a motion to approve a combined, combination Class B beer and reserve Class B intoxicating liquor license application for Four Sisters Incorporated in Verona doing business as Four Sisters Wine and Tapas Restaurant at 958 Liberty Drive, Suite 106, in Verona, Wisconsin, Korn Wieland as agent, contingent upon a records check.
Okay, we have a motion by Alder Touche, seconded by Alder Ricky.
Four Sisters has applied for the license. This license will allow them to serve wine, beer, and liquor at the Tapas Restaurant. This license extends to the 56-seat patio area as well. Currently, it's under construction and expected to be completed sometime in September. Along with the records check, once they receive their occupancy permit, they'll be issued the license.
Thank you for the explanation. Any questions or comments for the Public Safety Committee? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Any further business from Public Safety and Welfare?
That is all.
Thank you. Next, we have Agenda Item 9C, Planning Commission.
I'm Katherine Holt from the Planning Department. This is actually my first time speaking here, so, well, thanks for joining us. Thanks. So, the Plan Development Concept Plan located at 600 Hometown Circle that would allow for the construction of a 2,200-square-foot Starbucks coffee store. The applicant is requesting a planned unit development, PUD concept review, to allow for the construction of a 2,200-square-foot Starbucks coffee store at 600 Hometown Circle. The Plan Commission reviewed the project on August 7th through 2017. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for the use and comments about traffic and circulation for this development as it relates to the existing Farm and Fleet parking lot. The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. No formal motion is required as this is the conceptual review of the project. The applicant is also here tonight, if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you, Alder Doyle. I had a phone call on the location. How close to that daycare center is this coffee shop?
It is north of the daycare center and the Farm and Fleet parking lot, so it's probably, I don't know, 500 feet, you would say, Jeff? Yeah.
So, it's not sitting like right next door to like their fenced-in playground?
No, it is not.
There is at least 500 feet space?
Maybe a little less than that, but it's not right, it's not right beside it, basically. You'd have to extend the sidewalk north beyond the daycare to even get to the proposed Starbucks location.
Then are they going to have designated parking for this business? It sounds like it's to the west of the Farm and Fleet workshop area, huh?
It is south of Farm and Fleet, north of the daycare, and they will have their own parking facility in front of the Starbucks, and basically, they're going to use, take out the existing parking lot, put the Starbucks there, add parking in front of the Starbucks, and then another drive aisle and parking on the other side.
Is there a detention pond there, near them?
Yes. It is right behind the Starbucks, but Mr...
Is that going to interfere with the drainage of water from the Farm and Fleet parking lot? Will it have to go through their property or go through the daycare property to get to the detention pond?
No, the detention pond is north of the childcare center, and it's designed to handle the parking lot runoff. We don't have spot grades or anything on it yet, so we won't know exactly how they do the drainage, but the sheet drainage right now all goes that direction. This is actually going to decrease the impervious area. Instead of all being asphalt, there will be some grass, so it will help with the detention pond. So when we get the actual final plans, we will look and make sure that the drainage all gets there, but it won't impact the Rainbow Childcare.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Steiner. Any more questions or comments?
So, Mr. Montpass, real quick, just looking at the, and this is not necessarily relevant to the building where it lands, I'm just looking at the, having driven into that Farm and Fleet here where I'm pointing at, on the, which would be on the west, the western, southwestern entrance there to the Farm and Fleet, that intersection's kind of a, not intersection, but that driveline's a little goofy there, just because that island sticks out in. My recommendation, as long as they're reworking the parking lot there, they might want to, you know, cut off the edge of that island, just because the sightline's kind of weird right there, and if you're going to be increasing the traffic that comes in and, you know, drives through there, it might be...
Something we'll certainly consider when we get the full engineering plans formed.
Okay. Alder Linder?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I mean, this project, we got the parking lot of Farm and Fleet that is empty quite a bit, and it seems like repurposing it to have another business, and like I said, less impervious surface than it was before. Seems like a pretty positive thing for the city. I'm sure it'd be popular with a lot of people. I think it's a good, good idea.
Thank you. Alder Diaz?
Thank you. Regarding the traffic, this area can withstand a little bit more traffic. Is that the opinion of city staff?
Yeah, the traffic generated by the Starbucks isn't going to impact what's, what's Hometown Circle's been designed and West Verona or East Verona's been designed to handle.
Is there going to be a drive-through?
Yes. On the western side, you'll actually go through the parking lot towards Farm and Fleet, and then left around the building to the order and pickup, and then you'll, they'll discharge back out towards that entrance that Mac was talking about. It'll be stopped at their, drive-through entrance will be a stop, so that the vehicles coming in and out will have free flow.
I just wanted to comment that I don't really like the idea of no bike racks. I think that should be part of the initial plan right off the bat, and I don't like the landscaping exemptions. I'm glad that there would be more grass, but I think that they should do the full, normally required landscaping. And I'm also concerned a bit about the traffic pattern and flow through there. It just seems tight.
Thank you. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Madam President. I do also, I actually would like to see bike racks as well, just as someone who bikes frequently to that area for other reasons, but, and I'd be surprised if they didn't put them there, but my only comments are, is I've heard from one person so far on this issue or opportunity. If people do have concerns, I would love to hear them. I've only heard in the past from mostly my teenage children that they would love a Starbucks, because right now they go to Target to get their Starbucks. So I do have concerns about just what it can mean to Verona, but I think if people really want their Starbucks, they're already going to Target to get there, so, that's all.
Thank you. And I think I've only had outreach from one resident as well, and it was more just talking about concerns about creating a new lot and things along those lines. But yeah, we'll continue to see this evolve moving forward. Any additional business from the Plan Commission? No. Thank you for being here tonight. Onto Agenda Item 9D, Park Recreation and Forestry Commission. Alder Ricky?
I would like to make a motion to award the Cathedral Point Shelter project to KSW Construction in the amount of $339,462.
We have a motion by Alder Ricky.
Second.
And we have a second by Alder Steiner.
On August 2nd, competitive bids were accepted by three companies for the construction of a park shelter to be placed at the new Cathedral Point Park along Chad's Crossing with a bid of $339,462. KSW Construction Corporation was the lowest qualified bidder. Staff recommend city council approve the low bid from KSW Construction for that amount for the construction of the Cathedral Point Park Shelter. Completion date for the shelter is May 1st, 2018. Parkland dedication funds will be used to construct shelter.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none. The motion before you is to approve the award, or award the Cathedral Point Park Shelter project. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Any further business from the Parks Committee? Thank you. Agenda Item 9E, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee was, did not meet today, but we do have this one item. I make a motion to approve change order number one and closeout for Project 2016-119, Northern Lights/County Highway PD Water Main Extension.
We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Diaz.
RG Hudson Company has successfully completed Project 2016-119, which included the installation of Water Main north, north across County Highway PD, near the intersection of County Highway PD and Northern Lights. Contract notes are as follows. Contract awarded value was originally $103,000, $136,202, back on October 27th of last year. The final contract value after validating as-built quantities is $90,778.00 under change order number one, therefore, a net reduction of $45,423.40. The decreased cost is due to a reduction of the 12-inch Water Main pipe installed. At this time, we recommend approval for this project, or for this payment.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Onto Agenda Item Number 10, Old Business. We have discussion and possible action regarding the selection of a city council representative to the Plan Commission. We would entertain nominations at this time. Alder Touche?
I'd like to nominate Alder Linder.
Okay, are there any additional nominations? Alder Ricky?
I would like to nominate Alder Diaz.
All right, and we will have a roll call vote. Clerk Clark? Alder Ricky?
Alder Diaz.
Alder Steiner?
Alder Linder.
Alder Touche?
Alder Linder.
Alder Diaz?
Alder Diaz.
Alder Linder?
Alder Linder.
Alder McGilvery?
Alder Linder.
All right, neither has received the necessary six votes. So we will move on to Agenda Item Number 11, New Business. Discussion and possible action regarding the approval of operator licenses. There are no operator licenses for approval this evening. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 12, we, are there any announcements? Alder Steiner?
Thank you, Madam President. It's got a nice ring to it. The Cops Night Out. What a fantastic turnout, not just by our police officers and the department, but by a lot of civic groups that came in and participated and allowed our public to see the facilities that we have over there at Hometown Field and the Stuser Shed there. It's just, what a wonderful event, and even people from out of town came, and I'm not sure they were supposed to be there, but they came anyway because they heard what a, what a great time. And it's so nice to see those, and then the cleanup. That was a very positive event. A lot of groups pitched in on that. It was just, overall, just a wonderful group. Now, another one that's going on, and I'd really like to see more of you downtown, because the street is open, and Hometown Junction has a very nice event there on Tuesday evening. There's some diehard stands that have been coming in, and a little bit of music, and I think it's this Friday, too, across the street there at a local establishment, they're going to have a big party coming up, too, so, I'm not sure if it's this Friday, though. Lee, do you know that date?
I think it's... We're having music on May, this Friday.
Okay.
Friday at 5:00 PM, I believe.
All right, maybe that's what it is, then. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alder Steiner. Alder Touche?
I'd also like to remind people that the Iron Man is coming on September 10th today. Public Safety approved the permit for the event tonight, so get ready for Iron Man, September 10th, it's coming.
Thank you. It's always nice to start planning ahead for that. Any, Alder Diaz?
Thank you. I also just want to thank the Verona Police Department for a great national night out. My son, who is four, had a great time. And I also want to thank the Police Department for doing the coffee with the cop at McDonald's. I thought that was a really good community, I was not able to attend, but from everything I've heard, it seemed like a really good community event, and I think it's good that the Police Department is doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I know my parents were pleasantly startled at the drive-through by the police officers that morning. If there's no further announcements, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Linder. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. And we are adjourned.